And so we do a roll call, Brian or Steve?
Sure, Mr. Showman here, Ms. Lankowski.
Here.
Mr. Bryce.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Ling Alice.
Here.
And Ms. Wells.
Here.
Okay, yeah, six.
Okay, wonderful. We will start with our first section, review and action on applications. Our first matter is twenty twenty-four dash twelve SPR Maine Norwalk LLC, two seventy-two dash two eighty Main Avenue. It's an extension of time requests. For the proposed construction of three two-story structures with retail and tenements. Is anyone here representing the applicant?
I am, Madam Chair.
Okay, wonderful. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission for the record. I'm Liz Suchi, a partner of Harmony Torrents, Sandec and Hennessy. I represent the owner of the property at two seventy-two Main Avenue. The owner is Maine Norwalk LLC. Last year in June, you approved, this commission approved a site plan review application for the construction use and occupancy of a nineteen thousand square foot two-story retail building with ten apartments on the second floor, including one affordable, a twenty-two-hundred-plus-or-minus coffee shop and a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot-plus-or-minus restaurant with a hundred ninety-five parking spaces on the site, including several that are EV chargers. We're actively pursuing tenants. As a matter of fact, there was some interest expressed to us by a grocery retailer this week. We are coming upon the expiration of the one year during which we need to secure zoning and building permits. So we would ask that you allow us another year before we have to secure those permits. And that would enable us to continue to offer the property and market it to prospective tenants. So perhaps what happened today may come to pass, but your extension of time is what we're seeking from this question.
Attorney Suchi, I've noticed on the property for sale signs, are they also actively pursuing the sale of the property?
That is, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. There, it is offered for sale as well. So it's another reason to keep the permits live so that if in fact there's a sale, the sale would also be able to, the purchaser, if there is a purchaser, would also be able to move forward with the underlying approvals. Any other questions? Me, I'm happy to answer them.
Attorney Suchi, hi. Are you able to say who the potentially interested party is?
No, because it was just through a broker. I don't have any yet.
Okay, thought I'd ask.
I don't have a question more, it's more of a request that the site be a little bit landscaped. The weeds are growing very quickly. I drove by it the other day, so.
Michelle Williams, I will definitely relay that to the property owner, that it be properly maintained and that the grass be mowed and it be cleaned up to your satisfaction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? If not, does anybody want to move to extend the time as requested?
I'll make the motion, Gillen.
Okay, okay, Tammy moves and Daria seconds. Do we have?
Just to confirm, so one year, one year extension of time?
Yes, one year extension. Okay, all those in favor, we should probably do a roll call.
Mr. Showman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
I think I need to be seated.
Oh, yes, 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 so sorry. You are seated throughout the meeting.
Yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lang Gallas?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Let's see, Ms. Tabashnik is, it just popped up.
Okay, so we are all set.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a fast meeting tonight.
Thank you.
It's open, thank you.
Moving on, our next matter is on number ten dash seventeen SP JDMU LLC, Briarwood Road, U Street, bond release request for conservation subdivision, report and recommended action.
So I'll handle this one, Ms. Wells. This is just a bond release for a completed and since certificate of occupancy, conservation subdivision, it's been completed. So as typical, a bond is required usually for erosion controls at the beginning, prior to getting zoning permit. And the project's been completed, so they're asking for their bond back.
I'll move approval, return the bond to the owners.
That are both Anna and Diana are seated.
I'll second.
You did second, any seconds? Okay, do we want to do a roll call?
Mr. Showman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lang Gallas?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
That's approved, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the, excuse me, the next matter. That's number six dash eighteen SPR EDG Properties, seventy-one dash seventy-five Connecticut Avenue. Again, this is a bond release request for a mixed-use development with thirty-three units in fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet of medical. Again, this is for a bond release, Brian?
Yeah, Michelle might be able to help me out too.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's all right, and Mr. Deets is here as well, but similar to the last one, it's been a completed multifamily development located at seventy-one seventy-five Connecticut Ave. It's been, it's received its certificate of occupancy and now the applicant is just requesting their bond be released.
Any questions that anybody has for Michelle or Ryan? If not, someone make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the bond release.
I second.
Okay, good. Why don't we do a, Michelle, can you do a a roll call, a vote?
Sure. Ms. Tabashnik? Yes, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lang Gallas?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Showman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
You know us.
Thank you. The next matters are public hearings. The first public hearing is twenty twenty-five dash seventeen R slash SP, the Mid Fairfield AIDS Project, Seven More Place. This is a zoning regulation text amendment application to modify the minimum number of parking requirements for boarding a rooming house used in conjunction with a special permit in connection with a special permit application for a boarding or rooming house. So there's a public hearing, a report and recommended action. Who's handling this? Is someone representing the applicant? Okay, Mr. Wayne?
So you want me to just give you like a little cross-section of where we're at and who we are?
Yes.
The thing, okay, so Mid Fairfield AIDS Project or MFAP, which is a shorter name for us, has been serving the town of Norwalk for thirty-five years. We started off as an aid service organization doing case management and services for people with HIV and AIDS. And then from there, we got heavily into housing because housing, as you know, has become a very huge issue, not just for people with HIV, but for everyone. So we added housing, we have forty units that we subsidize, and we have Nine More Place, which is the, the building next to the Seven More Place that we're talking about today. We also have some substance abuse programs and some other programs. I'm the executive director and we have twelve people working for us. So at Nine More Place, we've been in, we've had that house for eleven or twelve years. And it is a, you could call it an unofficial group home. It's, it's listed as basically two, two apartments. And at the time when we started, we were allowed to have four or five unrelated. And we run the program as a program. It's not a boarding house per se, and it's not independent apartments. It's a program that we take people that are homeless or in danger of becoming homeless that also have a disability such as HIV, substance abuse, mental illness, or SSI or SSDI. And we bring them in there for permanent supportive housing, so they can live there as long as they wish. But while they're there, we apply for all, you know how two-on-one puts out an email every time there's an opening on the list anywhere in the state for Section Eights, vouchers, public housing. And what we do is we apply for them to, to try and get a subsidy because our clients will never have the money to afford the rents that are existing in Norwalk right now. And some of them work, some of their, some of them are on SSI. And we work with them to try and help them relearn the skills they need to live independently. We work with them to basically move them into a place where they won't go into an apartment and then lose it because of substance use or mental illness, or just not knowing how to run their lives. And then eventually after two or three years, we usually find a subsidy and they move out. However, they can stay there. So that's the program we've had for many years. The next-door neighbor is, was willing to, suddenly decided he would sell the property, which is right next door to us. It's two buildings at Seven More Place. And if we were to purchase it, it would make a kind of a compound with three buildings. And so the State of Connecticut Department of Housing was interested in the program. They liked what we've done. We've moved a hundred people out of homelessness into independent living, where they've actually put thirty percent of their income into the cost of, of their apartments. So they liked the program, so they were willing to purchase the property next door. And we're about to close on that on Tuesday, after eight months of, of working on, on the bureaucracy of that. And then they also are willing to refurbish, renovate the two buildings. And the problem was is that the, the zoning changed on our street. When we first got Nine More Place, you could, we could get the house, we could do work on it, no problem. But then the zoning changed, and the only way for us to continue that same program over to Seven More Place was to apply for a boarding house permit, and then also to apply for a text amendment on the number of parking spaces needed. So that's where we're at now, and we're requesting from, from you folks the permit for a boarding house, even though, you know, it's technically a boarding house, but it's not run as one. It's, it's a program, you know, and then the, we have seven parking spaces. And we feel that, you know, rooming houses are low-income housing. And according to the plan that the city has been working on, and as, I don't know what they've approved so far, the, these, these rooms that we, so everyone gets their own room, and then they share a kitchen and a, and bathrooms. We have four bathrooms in Nine More Place, and we'll probably have three bathrooms in the other, in the Seven More Place. We have staff that's twenty-four hours there all the time and working with the clients. So in order to make it work the way it's been working so well, we need the permit for the boarding house. And then to change the rule for, for the parking space needed for a boarding house to four people per space. None of our clients currently have cars, and I know that doesn't translate to, you know, that, to making that a rule. But we find that, we think that seven would, would give us, we're going to have twenty total rooms. And that would be, according to this, four per one, we would have five parking spaces and then two left for staff.
How many staff members are there?
So currently we have three, so that we can have the twenty-four-hour supervision. And then once we, we, once we have seven more place with the two buildings and the additional ten rooms, so we'll have a total of twenty rooms altogether between the three houses, and we'll have six staff. So not all at the same time, obviously, you know, so at one time, there's usually one staff at a time, and then during the day, sometimes there's an overlap so that they can have meetings and, you know, figure out what to do with, you know, for the clients and how to best serve them. So the, the equation that we, where I worked out would work if you think that it's appropriate to, to make that change.
Do other people come to provide services at the house? Do your residents, like physical therapists, nursing?
Most of, most, so the job of the residence manager and also case manager is to make sure that each, each client has a care plan. So in their care plan, it might say, depends on what their need is. So they might need counseling and therapy, or they might need substance abuse treatment. And we will either take them to, to like Connecticut Counseling, Renaissance, Family and Children's Agency. We work with all the agencies. Or not often do they come to the house, but we definitely, you know, make sure that they get to their appointments and have the services that they need. I mean, that's crucial to them moving forward and eventually moving out. You know, the, 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 kind of the, the policy has been for, we, so we work with homeless and a lot of homelessness, and we work with the open doors and, you know, Pacific House from Stanford, who has a couple of houses in Norwalk. So we work with all of them, and they refer people to us that are coming out of the shelter. And then liberation programs and other drug programs refer people to us that have finished treatment. So they come to us, and we have rules, you know, we, we, they have to do chores. You know, not a huge amount, but they have to do chores, clean them up after themselves. And there's certain things that they cannot do. They cannot, it's a sober house, so they cannot use drugs and alcohol. They cannot steal, and they cannot touch another person. Those are grounds for immediate discharge. However, we don't discharge people to the street where some organizations do. We will send them to a shelter or to usually the Bridgeport Rescue Mission. But we, we have an eighty percent success rate up for the last ten years. And that's pretty amazing. Success rate in that they complete the program in that they finish by moving into their own apartment that they can afford because they get a subsidy, and then we follow up with them and make sure that they're doing good for the next year. I don't know if I answered your question, I'm kind of long-winded.
Um, is there any record of complaints by people in the neighborhood about anything happening at the house in terms of violations, noise violations, things like that?
Not that I know of. We have a website, people can go on the website and send me emails. And, you know, we, we have a Facebook account and all the other stuff. But we've never had a problem. The only persons we've really been, you know, exposed to and close to is our neighbor, who's now selling us their property. You know, and it's never been a problem. We've, we've been very blessed, very blessed.
Any other questions for Mr. Wayne? Okay, hearing no questions, I think we can open this for public participation. As you know, because we allow everybody one chance to speak who's interested in speaking, but you only get one chance, so please say everything that you want to say during your opportunity to speak. And give us your name and your address before you begin. That's very important. Brian, can you bring people, see if there's anybody who's, who would like to participate?
Sure, so if anyone would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen, click that once. And if you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine. With that, we have Diane Cece.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Diane Cece, thirty-seven Olmstead Place. I'm also on the board of the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Our board did not do a review of this application, so just speaking as a resident and not be on behalf of the, of our board. I wanted to just point out that I think there's a dire need for these types of supportive housing and services in Norwalk and surrounding communities as well. So, and I think these particular parcels, the existing one and, and the one, I'm not sure if this purchase was contingent on this approval or if it's going through regardless, but I think that the other parcel as well is well-suited in terms of access to local services and access to the train station and some amount of walkability that will probably improve in the next few years. So I'm happy to see Mr. Lane pursuing this. I, I had put in a, a call, I didn't get a call back, not sure what happened with that, but to Mr. Lane, just because I had some concern with the issues of parking for the ones that you just discussed in terms of the number of residents, and then also potentially, there's nothing to say that this needs to be restricted as a boarding house strictly for this organization. So once this is approved, then there's upwards of twenty rooms, and that could be a boarding house through the normal, you know, rental cycle. And so there could be a lot more cars, and then there wouldn't be parking, so. But I know that, I think that Mr. Lane said that the existing parcel has now been operated for ten years or more. So hopefully that won't be the, the case with this. And, and again, my, the reason why I'm supportive of this is because it is supportive housing, and it's providing the services where they're needed with the expectation that people then move on. And I think that's, I'm, I'm not sure what other success rates are, but that eighty percent certainly sounds very positive to me. So I think that this should get approved. My, my, my only other concern would be, I'm not sure, and don't take this personally, Mr. Lane, but I'm not sure what type of oversight the city actually has once this gets approved. I know to some extent, there's oversight just by virtue of, of being a rooming house or boarding house with the fire department and health department and et cetera. But I would just like to know that there'd be periodic reviews of the number of occupants and the issue with, with parking. And then my only other question would be, I, I don't think this is ever going to happen in my lifetime, but should the need for these services not be there in the future? Would the plan then be to use this as regular potential market rate rentals? And whether or not that would be allowed? I think that's all that I wanted to say, and thank you.
Could I answer, could I address that?
Well, you can at the end. We'll see if anyone else wants to speak.
Yeah, then you get to do a rebuttal.
Okay.
If anyone else is interested in speaking regarding this application, you can use the raise your hand tool. Click that once, it's located at the bottom of your screen. Seeing no takers, Ms. Wells.
Okay. Good, then we'll close the public participation section of the public hearing, and you can respond, Mr. Wayne.
I, I just wanted to thank Diane Cece. Did, did you, where did she say she was from? The community?
East neighborhood.
Right, and I just wanted to address some of her concerns. Everyone has to pay four hundred dollars a month rent when they come in. So some of them are on SSI, that's, they get eight hundred dollars a month, so four hundred of that goes to the rent. But, you know, it covers everything. They don't, they, it covers some food, you know, they don't have to pay for anything else. Plus, most of them have food stamps, so that covers them, and we, we always make sure they have what they need. We would never, this is always a program to bring people from homelessness into, you know, into civilization, if you want to call it. We would never have it as a, you know, you know, affordable housing, so to speak, at twenty-two-hundred a month or whatever. It would never be on the market for something like that. It would always be this, and we've just been very blessed that this program, I mean, I, you know, we do a lot of programs and we've been doing them for a long time. And I think that this is the best program we've had and, and given us the most results. And homelessness is, is getting much worse because of, you know, where we are politically and, you know, where we are in the world. And, you know, people, you know, we don't want people living on the street, especially in the wintertime. So we do the best we all can. It's kind of it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question for the staff. I'm certain the staff has reviewed this carefully. It's an important worthwhile program. Are we opening up any door here in terms of parking that could come back to bite us as an issue with other developments?
So I don't, I don't necessarily think so. You know, the, the use itself is only permitted by special permit, regardless of what, what zone it's allowed in, which is only the, the commercial zones as well as the, the LI. So you always have a little bit of oversight there. And then in terms of kind of like where we've been heading with just typical market rate or, or affordable housing, we've, we've essentially lowered that down to half a space per unit. So, I mean, based on the, the affordability of these units, going down to essentially what comes down to a quarter of a space per unit seems to be kind of trending in, in that direction. And then again, based on this specific application that Mr. Lane has presented, that the, these folks don't have cars, you know, you're going to be able to have that oversight each time an application like this comes in. And who knows with this, the new housing bill that we'll talk about later, it may be already decided for us.
Yeah. Does anybody else have a question? Or comment?
Just a question, Mr. Lane, thank you for your presentation, and you might have said it, but are you privately or publicly funded?
Both. So the Department of Housing from the state is paying for the purchase of the property, and they're going to pay for the renovation. When we started Nine More Place, which is right next door, we took out a mortgage. We could not get funding from the state, because at that time, the, you know, the, the political will was put everyone in an apartment. And this was not, you know, you don't get your own apartment, you get your own room with a lock on it, and you share the rest. And that was not very popular ten years ago. So we had to fund it all ourselves. And now that is starting to change somewhat, and we are getting some help. But even, even still, these kind of programs, believe it or not, are, are not really popular with the powers that be. The commissioner of the Department of Housing, I will say, Sala Bruno Moscara, is, loves these programs and totally believes in making some changes in the status quo.
So when the purchase goes through, your organization will own the building, not the state of Connecticut?
Thirty years. I, I, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't tell you the, it's a weird thing where for thirty years we are beholden to them and we cannot sell it, we cannot do anything but use it for what they've granted the money for. And also, in answer to Diane's question, you know, we have oversight from any funding that we get. We're constantly audited and constantly, you know, We're constantly audited and constantly, you know, checked on. So that's a way of, of, of keeping us, you know, I mean, we always do very well on our audits for whatever, you know, we have other grants and different programs. But it's a way that keeps you in touch with the funders and, you know, making sure that you're doing what you contracted to do.
Thank you. I, I just make a comment that I think in this, on this particular street, it's dead end. And the train tracks run on the other side of the street. So there's sort of a natural on-street parking where if there were houses on the other side of the street and the parking became an issue, you know, it might be more of a problem, but in this particular location, it couldn't be better.
There's five houses on the street. And they all have off-street parking. So whatever parking we see on the street is usually construction. Cause there's a lot of that going on.
Someday that's going to end.
Yes, hopefully.
Right. And that business, they have access on the other side on Van Zandt Street, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Further questions, comments? I, I think we should take the zoning modification first and then take the approval of the of the boarding house second. Split them into, into two. Do we have a motion for the zoning modification?
Alan, do you want to close, close the hearing?
Yes, yes, thanks.
Yeah, we can hear, oh, okay. Not for us.
Sorry, it's childcare.
No, you're not motioning to us. Okay. Okay. Yes, thank you. We'll close, we'll close the hearing. And do we have a motion for the for the
So moved.
What?
A motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
All seconds. This is Chapin.
Okay. Can we put the?
So I, I, I drafted this up as kind of like one resolution. I shouldn't have done that. I should have drafted as two separate. So for this part, what we'll just do is take the text amendment.
Well, is there anyone opposed to doing it as one?
Yeah, we could do it as one. Do you want to modify the the motion? Animate the motion?
Yes, I move to amend my motion to motion to approve the combined proposed text amendments and approval of rooming house status or whatever.
Special.
Special permit. Move to approve the special permit and the text amendment as one.
Okay, how about this person who seconded?
Yep, Chapin.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm good to second to that motion.
Okay, good. Okay, we can move forward. Does anybody have any comment? Want to make any addition?
No, it looks good to me.
Okay. Well then let's do a roll call.
Or Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgalls?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Lane, for all the services that you offer and yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Wayne.
Thank you and best of luck.
So we'll move on to our, to the next public hearing. It's twenty twenty-five dash thirteen P O C D Planning and Zoning Commission. Amendment to the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-nine Plan of Conservation and Development to adopt the Nowak Affordable Housing Action Plan dated two hundred twenty-five as an amendment to the P O C D. There'll be a public hearing and a report and recommended action. Michelle, you want to?
Yes, pull up a slide deck. Can you all see this?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Many of you may have seen some of these slides and I'm sure you all are familiar about this plan process to an extent, but this is a public hearing item and we are gearing up to get final approval and amendment to the P O C D. And then we'll have questions from the public following the presentation. So the why, this was a state requirement, but the city knew that it needed to organize. Where we wanted to see affordable housing in the direction of affordable housing for the city. So this organized that for us. But I list out some specific requirements that the state statute requires. And the plan will be updated every five years. The municipality needs to show how it intends to increase the number of housing units, which we have done. There is a requirement of public informational meetings and activities to the residents about the plan development process, which we had done. Public hearing notice requirement, which we did, and the plan had been made available to the public on our website as well as the town clerk's office. And then the plan must regularly be reviewed and maintained, which we plan to do. So the outreach was an important part of this plan process. This included interview, interviewing local housing stakeholders, roundtable discussion with residents, housing need webinars and in-person events, pop-up events, city events. And we launched a survey with the redevelopment agency as well. There was also a steering committee included in this plan, which helped drive the plan. We checked in with them throughout, which helped drive the direction of the plan. So that was important. And then our consultant, after analyzing all the data and information we received, this boiled down into a needs assessment and that's an addendum to this affordable housing plan. That is where all the recommendations and actions came from. So the recommendations fall into four categories. This includes the zoning and land use. An example of these are zoning regulation amendments, public-private partnerships. This could be construction of new affordable housing units throughout underutilized city-owned land, tax and financing innovations. This could be local tax incentive to facilitate affordable housing. And then federal and state advocacy, so lobbying to change barriers to unit types and expand affordable housing programs. Within the plan, we flagged five priority action items. And some of those were looking at the inclusionary zoning provisions and making tweaks to that, which we already started. Construction of affordable units on city-owned land. You can find a list of those, city-owned parcels within the plan. Another thing we recommended is taking a look at naturally affordable units. Those are perhaps older units, no amenities and just tend to be more affordable for the residents that live in them. So coming up with something to help update those, but still have them be affordable to the residents that live in them. Tax incentive policies for affordable units. Advocate for more governmental funding for public and affordable housing. So hopefully seeing some opportunities there. So here are a list of actions that we're working on or completed. As this commission is aware, there were a handful of zoning amendments that were already passed, which included the two-bedroom units, counting as one-point-five workforce units, increasing the allowance for recertifying tenants up to ninety percent of the state median income. A density bonus for construction of units between eighty and ninety percent state-made income. And we are working on a handful of legislative proposals. This is food deserts. So the idea we saw in New York City where they were putting in zoning incentives to support grocery stores and grocery store developments. If you're promoting density and TOD, you want to make sure that the folks that live there have access to food. So we're taking a look at something that we would need to get enabled by, by the statute. So some language we're working with now. Another option was the homeownership for condominiums. So we have seen a lot of rental units go up and it was, there's always the question of why aren't we seeing condos go up, which increases homeownership opportunities. And we believe there's probably a handful of issues within the state statute that's really prohibiting a developer to want to do that. So we're going to try and unravel that and put something together that proposes to remove those issues. And then the tax sale to homeownership. This idea, I believe Brian saw in Massachusetts, where delinquent and blighted properties that go into the tax sale for a town or city, having the housing authority be the right, right, giving the right of refusal. So we could have those units go into inventory for the affordable, for housing authority to be deed restricted, affordable. Other things we've been working on, we had a speaker on community land trusts. I know there's been a lot of conversations over the years of an interest in that and we're continuing, continuing to do that research. We had another speaker on tax incentives, Don Poland came to the Ad Hoc Affordable Housing Committee last month and did a presentation on that, coming up with options that the city could take. It seems like you could have a very tailored approach of what kind of affordable housing the city would like. Affordable housing account. So that ordinance has been approved for that account. These are the funds that were taken from the inclusionary zoning fee. So now we're working out the application process currently and then soon people can start dipping into that. We just want to iron out exactly who will be the applicants. And then we made a affordable housing tracker. So this was basically taking all the action items from the plan and putting it into more of an interactive live Excel sheet. And so we're going to continuously update with resources and information of where the status of each action item is. So we could keep tabs on things. And then lastly, you hosted an affordable housing fair, I believe it was last month. We'll be looking to maybe do other opportunities, opportunities like that in the future. Perhaps in conjunction with the community services department. This is my last slide I added here since the new housing bill is kind of all the talk right now and the question about how this new language will impact this plan. After reading it over, I think overall it's not going to have a huge impact on like our current plan, although this will be effective for the next rendition of our plan. But I, when going through the information, it seems like the city is doing a lot of these things already. But it included requiring the city to do a priority affordable housing plan, having realistic opportunities for additional affordable housing. So this can include different housing types, which needs to target twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of its total allocation. So with this language, there is also research and data compiled for each municipality of where they need to be targeting their affordable housing. So which only needs to be twenty-five percent of that requirement. And then there's the examples of where they could have the units applied to. So rental units, targeting two-bedroom units and kind of explaining how that, that municipality will be targeting its allocation. And then lastly, the municipality needs to describe how they intend to change their zoning and comply with those allocations, which I don't really foresee the city having an issue, but we'll see if this bill is signed. But happy to take any questions. I kind of went through it relatively quick, but.
Does anybody have any questions, Michelle?
Yeah, Michelle, you mentioned a couple of times about targeting two-bedroom units. What do you mean by that? Or what does the proposal mean by that, targeting two-bedroom units?
So we definitely saw in the needs assessment, needing more than just having the single bedroom. So targeting two-bedroom units would be, you know, in the workforce housing plan, we wanted to create more incentive to create having a developer to allocate two more, two-bedroom units. So it's things like that that will create more family-sized, larger bedroom units is where the idea is. I hope that answered your question.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Michelle, your final slide, affordable housing. How is the city defining affordable?
So we still follow what the state statute requires. So it's
Eighty percent?
It's, well, it's affordable housing is the thirty percent threshold. So people spending not more than thirty percent of their gross income is considered affordable.
Okay, so it is not, excuse me, it's not what the state refers to as affordable housing?
It is in the definition that goes along with the eight dash thirty G definition. So you'll see in there affordable housing.
But not with the current one.
Oh, with the new legislation, I think. Yeah, I'll have to take a look specifically with the definitions if they change their definition of. Brian, are you aware if they changed the definition of affordable housing in that legislature? Yeah.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
But is that affordable with a capital A or a small a? Like there's a housing that's affordable and then there's affordable housing with a capital A. You don't get what I mean.
These, these would be like deed, deed restricted.
Deed restricted, capital A, affordable housing units, right? That you guys maintain the list and all of that.
Right.
So Michelle, can you tell us a little bit more about the Affordable Housing Fair, where it was, how it was advertised, how many people attended?
Sure. It was the twenty-second of May, held at City Hall in the community room. And we didn't have a count or a sign-up sheet, but I would say it was probably forty, fifty people, seemed.
No, I was going to say it was, I, I was doing a couple, and I, I had, I was going to mention that. Michelle deserves a huge amount of credit for that, because in my nine years here, that was probably the best, one of the best events I've been to was awesome. There was, I counted, I think there was close to one hundred and fifty people in total coming in and out at different times. The community room was packed. There were people lined up thirty minutes before we started the event. And I had people, you know, just regular people come up and thank, thanking us for putting it together, saying it was a big help. I thought it was awesome. I, I actually went in there telling Michelle about twenty minutes before I went and looked outside. I said, all right, if we get twenty people, I think I'd be happy. And I was just blown away. I was really surprised. And we didn't, we didn't publicize it in, in a way to get like publicity. We tried, we worked through community services department to get the outreach component done, because they knew how to reach the people who actually would benefit from the, the programs that were offered and discussed at that meeting. But it was just, you know, Michelle did a ton of work getting that organized. It was just, that was really just one of the best things I've done since I've been here. It was just great.
Well, thank you, Michelle. And are you having another one anytime soon?
A lot of people are asking about it and there's definitely a lot of interest. So we definitely will put something together. I think since this plan and a lot of the work was put in on to the P and Z department and staff, but I think joint efforts with the community services is really like their wheelhouse. And I think both of the departments together can shine. So maybe another yearly, I know even talked to Anna and she wanted to do it more frequently than a yearly, but yeah, we'll see what we can do, just.
And the other really great thing that came out of this was just organizing the event. We got connected to so many different organizations and people that we typically don't interact with. And I think there was a lot of that back too, that was just like, so the city side coordinating with the nonprofit side a little more in Lamont and his group do that, you know, on a daily basis, but this kind of wrapped even more folks into the process. I think it will, you know, I was gonna, you know, Michelle and I were talking about, we would like follow up and see, because some people said they were already getting email contacts the next day from people that attended. So I think it was just a really good event.
It's very slow motion, but we It's very slow motion, but we heard it's fabulous, it was fabulous.
It was fabulous, it was at least nine hundred and twenty, nine hundred and thirty, if not more. And he was only there for the first half hour. Um it's absolutely packed and it was not a lot of tables. And it was a variety, so there were a couple senior housing, a couple sort of homeless services, a couple affordable home ownership. Like, it was a mix. But my point with it not being a whole lot was that you could tell. That people are desperate for this and looking for this. And they were thrilled by just having. The beginning of information and people had applications on hand to hand out. And it was just, it was amazing. Um Michelle, I wanted to ask about your presentation, though I think on the first slide, you mentioned the possible incentives to target eighty to ninety percent. So like that slightly higher income bracket um than we target now. At that presentation to the ad hoc affordable housing committee. Um I really liked that approach of developing tax incentives around specific building proposals. As opposed to having sort of flat incentives, whether that's density or your tax abatements. Um and I'm wondering if we're including any of that targeted to lower income bands going down to at least fifty, sixty percent SMI. I know we're already at SMI, which is lower, but in addition to the slightly higher. Um I'm hoping that our proposal includes the slightly lower as well.
Yeah, I think um. And I definitely gathered from that presentation that we could really apply it to what we really want. So I think taking the housing plan and looking at the bands that the consultant put together for us with the data. Uh you know, applying those makes sense and that's really deeply affordable in those those brackets. So I think it makes sense, we'll see, yeah.
Does anybody else have a question or a comment? Okay, we will uh open the public participation portion of this public hearing. Uh again, you only get one chance to speak, so say everything that you intend to say in that one chance. And uh but you can speak as long as you feel is necessary. Give us your name and your address when you are beginning to speak. Brian, are you gonna handle bringing people over?
Sure, uh if anyone is interested in speaking uh regarding this application, please use the raise your hand tool. It's located at the bottom of your screen and you'd click that once. And if you're dialing it on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Seeing none, Ms. Wells.
Okay. Good, well then we don't need to have a rebuttal. Thank you very much, I guess we could close the public hearing. And move on for uh.
Uh I would move to um approve the amendment. To the.
Mrs. Chapin, all second.
Okay, good. Michelle, shall we do a roll call?
Sorry, my computer is freaking out, wasn't letting me get to the audio. Um did you want me to pull up the resolution or we, do we have to show that?
Please do, please do.
All right, that should be it.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or wanna make any changes to the resolution? Uh if not, let's do a roll call vote.
All right. Um Ms. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Linkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Uh we will move on then to uh the next public hearing is twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five R. Fighting and zoning commission, zoning regulation text amendment. And I won't read the whole paragraph. But uh Brian, can you walk us through this?
Sure, uh so similar to some of the recent text amendments that uh staff has been presenting to you. These are mostly minor changes that have come up as we've been implementing any regulations. Um mostly minor changes uh that staff has noticed um during permitting process or questions come in. And there's just kind of some discrepancies that um we wanted to get addressed. Uh so the the first proposed amendment. Is for the C D three C zone specifically, which is the zone located mostly along uh Route One and Main Avenue. Um the first is to add in uh the restaurant use for how tall a uh finished floor can be. Um so currently that regulation is not listed, so that's kind of a cleanup. And then the second is to add in um these uses auditoriums, community centers, et cetera, which are sort of uh they they. Require to uh having taller ceilings, so right now they're limited to a a max thirteen-foot finished floor, which which doesn't work for those specific uses. So um we're giving them a little bit of wiggle room and regulating restaurants similar to the other commercial uses in the zone. Similar to that, um this is uh for the three W, four and four W zones. Um this is essentially the same thing as mentioned above. The only difference here is that uh commercial recreation is uh not allowed use currently in the three W, four and four W. So that's the, it's just exempted um here.
Yeah, I I just one quick thing to add, um Brian, is that the overall height for those buildings doesn't change. So it's just allowing more taller first floor, so the height impacts are are no different than current.
Uh the next change was um to add a principal use, which would be open space. Um and then just not regulate it. So um right now, we just, we we wanted it to be clear that open space is a use that can occur essentially anywhere in the city. Um but we're not gonna tie certain restrictions to it. Because there may be open space or instances where they might wanna put in a small parking lot in the front so people can park and access the open space. Um we didn't wanna be too prescriptive on 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 how we'd regulate it, um but we wanted to allow it. Uh number four is gonna modify uh various sections of the regulations, all with the intent of permitting townhouses within the marine commercial zone. So we have to modify just various sections uh where townhouse is mentioned um to allow it to um be permitted in the marine commercial. And it would ultimately be a special permit use, so we just need to allow the building type. Um and and uh and and et cetera for it to be permitted. And again, multifamily is already allowed in the marine commercial, so this is just a a different building type that allows essentially the same use to occur. Five was um uh mostly a cleanup was gonna be just for the cannabis uses to uh. Instead of referencing the old DPW roadway standards was to update it to the complete streets design guide. Uh we had done this with various other uses before, so that was, it's a it's a cleanup there. Um the street types don't change, so a commercial thoroughfare street per the complete streets design guide is essentially Route One and Main Avenue. Um and then as I was going through that, there were the amphitheater and auditorium uses, which had these really restrictive um requirements for how to access them. Which a strict reading of it would almost mean that these uses are prohibited, um because there's no way to actually access. The use with with the the language and so we're proposing just to delete uh the references to to these uh to these regulations here. Six uh and seven are changes to the flood zone regulation specifically. Um with the intent of uh stating. What the lowest floor and anything below that within a structure in the flood zone can be. So the lowest floor will become a defined term. Uh and what it essentially is, is the lowest finished floor of the structure. Um so that would have to be raised two feet above base flood elevation. And then any level below that has to be an unfinished area, which will become a a newly defined term. Um none of this is really a change from how we regulate, but it gets rid of any um gray area or wiggle room. Which some people had been able to take advantage of due to just some terms not being defined uh within our regulations. So this is just a cleanup to specify uh what can be below that lowest finished floor for homes in the flood zone. And seven, similar to that, is just referencing newly defined terms. And seven is specific to the um coastal A E and V E zones. Eight, um similar to what I had just mentioned, um is adding in new definitions for those newly defined terms. So unfinished area, uh finished habitable area. And then references elsewhere in other definitions, so the definition of story needs to get updated to reference these new terms. And then lowest floor needed um uh an an update. And a lot of this language is pulled directly from uh FEMA. So we kind of uh used their uh just uh guidelines for for how to define these terms. Um and then half-story, uh the the biggest change to half-story is to specify uh restrictions on what a half-story can be when you have a flat roof. Currently, a half-story, you can only have a half-story if um it's under a pitched roof, which was problematic for um. Village Creek specifically, um which are mostly those those two-story uh homes that um have flat roofs. So technically, they wouldn't be allowed to do a half-story. Um because it wouldn't be under a pitched roof and that kind of takes away from the whole architectural um uh the appeal of the neighborhood. So it's kind of just saying, you can also do a half-story located under a flat roof in here or the parameters associated with that. And I believe that's all of the changes that we're proposing.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, uh we will then open it for a public comment. Um again, you know, you get to speak once and so say everything you wanna say and you want opportunity to speak. But we don't say how long you can speak, so you can speak as long as you feel is definite for you to make all your points. And give us your name and your address when you begin. Brian, can you bring people over if they wanna participate?
Sure. Uh if anyone would like to participate, you just need to use the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen, you'd click that once. If you're dialing it on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Um with that, we have Diane Cece.
Uh good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm hi, Diane Cece, still at thirty-seven Olmsted Place. Uh good evening again, everyone. Um I I guess I have a couple of questions and then comments. I'm, I I I know that um Brian Baker said that some of these changes are just. Um as a result of staff review, kind of tweaking things that may have looked good in theory, but maybe not in practice. But there's a few of these, I'm I'm concerned, I I I don't know what staff can share with you or the public in terms of pending applications that may have prompted these changes. Um but two that I'm concerned about are why we have the need now to add townhouses to marine commercial. Um if it wasn't in there before. Um is there a pending application for that or did someone raise the question of whether they'd be able to do it? Um that would be one concern, obviously from the East Norwalk point of view. And then the other is, I'm not sure if um Brian Baker can bring it back up again. But the the restrictions that you removed on the um amphitheaters and um. I forget what the other two categories were, but it was relative to whether or not the traffic impact could um. Had an impact on the residential street for access. And you and you were striking um all of that text out of there. And I don't know if you can bring it up on the screen again, just so I can see what I'm looking at, if that's possible. Or see what you folks were looking at. Right, that's it. So it it and so why would you be taking this out? I know we can't have a dialogue, but my question would be why, why would this be coming out of there? It seems to me that um this would be something that would serve the neighborhoods well in terms of, you know, peripheral parcels that. Would cause a lot of traffic coming through a residential neighborhood. And I I again, I'm concerned that there may be a potential application coming forward that's prompting these changes. And I can think of um any number of parcels in Norwalk that this could could apply to. So I was just curious if you could speak more to um to this particular item. And also to the townhouses in in marine commercial as well. Yeah, I think and I think the other thing was to the um. I know that may have been on the affordable housing, so I'll I'll leave it at that. If you can address those, maybe some of the commissioners have the same question, thank you.
Right, and I'll I'll do the townhouses, but if you go first and do the second one, I'll, I'm just checking something before I respond.
Should we wait for the rebuttal section?
Uh yeah, I'll see, there's only one other person, I'll see if they're um interested. Um if anyone else would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool. No takers, Ms. Wells.
Okay, so let's move on to the rebuttal.
All right, I'll pull up that language. Um so the intent here um for the amphitheaters at least, there's so there's no, there's no pending applications for this. There's been, I've had no correspondence with anybody about wanting to do an amphitheater or an auditorium or center or other place of assembly. Um but a strict reading of these regulations, in my opinion, means that you cannot do an amphitheater, an auditorium, a community center or other place of assembly in the city of Norwalk. Because all the streets at some point are going to traverse residentially zoned or residentially used properties. So essentially, this language means that like the new Norwalk High School can't have an auditorium in it. Because it traverses residentially zoned and residentially used properties. So uh you know, at at the end of the day, a lot of these uses are gonna be regulated, especially the civic ones by um. You know, if the city were ever to say we wanna put an amphitheater somewhere, there's gonna be public hearings, there's gonna be uh, you you know, department reviews by everybody. Uh where all of this would get ironed out. So you know, that was kind of the the intent there. Um just that, you know, if if this language stays in, then it it, you know, kind of is what it is. It just means that these uses would not be allowed within the city, which um is 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 your discretion, but it, you know. When I read it, I said, well, we allow these uses, but we kind of don't because the, you know, functionally that the language would prohibit it. And see, I can, townhouse stuff, right?
Yeah, and and the, yeah, I I can, there there there's no pending application I am aware of. Yeah, in in the, yeah, I I can, there there there's no pending application I am aware of. However, we did get a request from someone representing a property owner in the marine commercial zone, and I'm happy to provide the. Correspondence to Ms Cece if she wishes. She can just send me an email. I'll forward it out. Um. They did ask to include uh townhouses in the marine commercial. And Brian, what did we? Yeah, so it is it is a permitted uh building type, and I can't remember, did we allow it? Yeah, so it's a special permit use that's proposed. There is housing allowed in the marine commercial zone now, so it's not like we're introducing a use that isn't already permitted in the zone. So we said, fine, we'll we'll put it in by special permits, and that way the commission has some control over, you know, the volume, how many, where they can actually be located, so forth. So yeah, we thought we felt that it, under the right conditions, would be fine to include that. You're muted, Galen. Galen, you're muted.
So sorry. Does anybody uh, well, I was saying, asking if anybody had anything to say, but nobody said anything. Sorry, so the answer is no. Um do you have a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion on this? Move.
I'll say.
Ooh, and Darius second. Okay, do we want to bring up the resolution? Okay, does anybody have a comment on the resolution itself? Want to see any changes? Uh if not, let's move to a roll call vote.
Your uh Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms Langallis?
Yes.
And Ms Wells?
Yes.
Right, that is unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Well, we're moving right along. We're to the discussion section, where we'll be discussing the new uh public act. Formerly HB five oh oh two. Um Brian, you're gonna lead that?
Yeah, let's start with um instead of five oh two, which probably is has more interest, we can start with. It's used to be Senate Bill nine. Um so the only reason why I wanted to pull that up and bring it to your attention. Is it's going to add to your workload um as commissioners and specific to um CAM applications. So I want to see if I can get to. All right, so what this bill essentially does, and I'm not sure if uh the governor assigned it yet. Is it removes the exemption of single-family structures that are located within the CAM zone from being exempt in certain circumstances from requiring a CAM application. So what this means is that any new single-family house built within the CAM area will require a CAM application and come before you, whereas right now it's pretty much limited to um. Single-family housing being constructed along the water. Um so thi- this is going to potentially significantly increase the amount of applications that you will have to see as part of. Uh 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 the Coastal Area Management Act, so um. Lucky us.
Yeah, staff is really annoyed with this proposal, just in it right.
Well, what's the rationalization for um this um new requirement?
That's what we've been asking. We didn't get a chance to do any kind of like digging into the origins of this. Uh Brian and I were at a um, you know, mandatory law and ethics seminar on last Friday, and they, there were a couple legislators there. And they, a bunch of people brought this up, saying this was just a good, every every coastal town is like, this is going to just unnecessarily add to our workload. Because, you know, it makes sense, we, you know, we were talking about this and. Internally, like, okay, we understand if you're building a house right on Long Island Sound or right on the Norwalk River. And you you know, you're going to impact potentially or could impact what happens in the sound water quality wise. Um so we were like, all right, we we understand that requirement to look at it, but if you're, you know, six houses up. Three streets up from the water and, you know, the wa- you know, the, all your stormwater is being handled on site. Your house is flood compliant. Why does this, there's no impacted coastal resources? So why is this getting looked at by the commission? It's just unnecessary. Sometimes these bills get created based off of what one particular legislator hears or one particular problem in one community, and we all kind of have to suffer for this. We we just think there's just no logical rationale for this change.
And as far as I know, D the DEP was also opposed to it. There's a, because there's a separate section. Uh I don't know if I highlighted it, but. It requires um us as staff, I think it's 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 an D here, to refer all. Uh applications that occur within the flood zone to DEP, and DEP was like, we do not have the staff to to handle the the influx of applications that we're going to have to review, so um you know, it I guess at this point, it it is what it is. Um I believe this goes into effect October one. Um so if it is signed or um not vetoed, I guess, then then we'll have to adjust some regulations for it.
Yeah, yeah, we we kind of like to get to a place where. Where the commission is hopefully at some point in agreement with us on these, this one, and we could talk about the housing bill as well. But we'd like to then speak to the mayor and then have, reach out to our legislators to talk about, you know, it when they go back in session. Removing this or seeing if they can get it removed, because it's just kind of, it seems like a burden at this point in time.
And then I'll pull up the housing.
How far this would increase the dis- the properties that are would be affected?
Yeah, we, um Brian, can you pull that map up? And I know Amelia did like a really quick kind of back of the envelope analysis, and. We thought it would be at least like another fifty applications a year. So that's, you know, if you, that doesn't sound like a lot, but. That's almost two a month at that point, so it's just like if when you're already, if you're at a night where it's ten thirty and like, oh, you're looking at the agenda. Well, we have another CAM application that's going to take twenty minutes. And not to mention that it's an additional cost burden on the applicant, because they have to hire professionals to process that application. Check off all the boxes on the CAM application, you know, it's thousands of dollars that yields nothing, so it's just kind of a big pain in the neck.
Yeah, so um I'll zoom in here. So usually right now, when you see any CAM applications, it's mostly limited to properties that are but. The actual water that are constructing new homes. Now, anything that's seaward of this aqua-colored line. And they're building a new house or a new structure, um will have to come before you for. All the way up, you know, Main Street and then down through East Norwalk. Or Second, Third, Fourth Ave. So it's it's a pretty significant. Amount of land. Generally, it's like a thousand feet from the water itself.
So Brian, it's pretty much what's in the AE flood zone.
Yeah, so there are parts that are in the CAM area that are not in the flood zone. Um so if it is in the CAM and the flood zone, then we'll have to refer it out to DEP, and you'll have to do a a CAM review of it. And then if it's not in the flood zone, then we just don't have to refer it to deep, but you'll you'll still need to look at it. Um all right, I'll pull up the housing bill now, which is. Probably the more significant one. Um so the housing bill, which was House Bill five zero zero two, um was approved, it has not been signed yet by the governor. But for impacts to Norwalk, there's really three um large components to the bill. Um the the first one is uh the fair share component to it. Um which Michelle had talked about during her affordable housing uh. Uh amendment. Um so essentially, what the state did is they put out a study. Um and they wanted to figure out how many affordable units each community would ultimately be um needs to plan to allow for. So um there's a separate study, which I I I think I had included in a a prior attachment, which includes their methodology. Uh so essentially, Norwalk's fair share is a total of like four hundred and sixty-eight units. It's not clear on if there's any affordability requirements tied to those units. Um so I mean, I think when when I read that portion of the bill and how it impacts Norwalk, we already have zoning that allows for four hundred and sixty-eight units to get built. Um so I mean, I think we are in a good place to say that we um comply with it. But again, some of this is still up in the air, um and it just needs to be a component of our new affordable housing plan when we when we're required to to recertify certify that plan. Um the other big change, and I'll see if I can find it in my comments. I was trying to highlight everything that was relevant to Norwalk. Was the state. Uh changed eh uh what zoning regulations shall and shall not do. And one of the things that they've added was zoning re- regulations shall not require a minimum number of off-street motor vehicle parking spaces for any residential development, um except under uh certain circumstances that they list. Um what those circumstances are essentially, uh municipalities cannot require minimum off-street parking for less than twenty-four residential units, and then anything over twenty-four units. Um the developer would have to supply their own parking study. And um you as the commission or us as staff cannot require more than a hundred and ten percent of that number. Unless there's some sort of public safety um or health issue that would be caused by them not providing. Um a sufficient parking. Um so it kind of puts us back to where we were a few months ago when we didn't have um. Minimum parking requirements, except this would be citywide. So this is any, all zones. Uh you cannot require minimum parking spaces. So single-family homes, two-family homes, multifamily. Um would all no longer have minimum parking requirement.
And that's speaking just to the residential, correct?
Correct, correct. So we could still require for the commercial, um which, you know. I don't know, when when it comes to commercial, I think that's kind of where there's more um. You know, I think it's hard for anyone to kind of determine how many parking spaces a specific commercial use needs. You know, it's hard to guess how many parking spaces a bowling alley needs. It varies from town to town. So, you know, that's one where I would have thought that they would have kept in, but they actually removed the commercial component to it. So um we could still require bowling alley parking spaces, but not residential parking spaces.
What happens in the case where somebody comes to us and they want to put residential in the commercial zone? Then you don't have to. Apply the any parking requirement?
Um so I think if there if there's various uses, like if it's a mixed-use building, we could still have, say that they need to provide the parking for the commercial use, um but then they'd be able to provide, they're going to have to provide their own parking plan anyways to say that the parking they're providing is sufficient. Um so I guess we'll kind of wait and see uh how how it all plays out. Um the other change, there's actually another change. There was a as-of-right commercial to residential. Uh allowance, so um. In all communities, there needs to be the uh as-of-right development of uh middle housing, which is two to nine units on any parcel that's zoned commercially. Um I I and I think we already do this uh citywide in all of our commercial zones. We allow you to do um. Multifamily, and I think we allow in all instances at least two units. So uh from from my perspective, I think we comply as a city with with that requirement, so no change um needed there. And then the last big uh component was uh the work, live, ride component of the bill. Uh so this. Was essentially, I'll um giving communities an incentive to create a TOD zone around um for lack of a better term, a train station. So we've already kind of done that. And in a in exchange for creating that plan, you, the community or the municipality would get. Um priority funding for certain infrastructure funds. So I believe Norwalk would be, would get um, we we already have TOD around multiple train stations. So we kind of are already complying with this, so we kind of get first dibs on these funds once they become available. I I think we we would comply with this, so there's no real change needed. Um so I know a lot of other communities have been pretty vocal about the bill and in its whole, but I think Norwalk's in a pretty good spot in terms of complying with everything already. Um it's really just that the no parking thing, which um we'll have to make some tweaks there to the regs if the governor signs it or doesn't sign it um, you know, as long as he doesn't veto it. You know, we will, we'll be in a pretty good spot.
Brian, what's the effective date of this bill, if he signs it?
Yeah, this one, I believe, is next October. I think it's October one of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
And so Brian, you said that Norwalk would have to have four hundred and sixty-eight. Affordable units, right?
So how it reads is the zoning needs to allow for the realistic opportunity for that number of units to be created. Um so it doesn't say they actually ever have to get built. It just says you need to realistically allow them to be built. So your regulations can't prohibit that number of units from getting built.
Okay, so if if we just said. We want five buildings with ninety-three units in it or something like that.
I don't even.
Fairly significant buildings.
Yeah, I don't think you even need to 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 state that. I think you just, we would run an analysis as part of the affordable housing plan to say, like, what our our zoning capacity is, like, how many units could potentially be built based on what's allowed in the zoning? Um and then, you know, I think what the the bill or what the legislature needs to specify is, do we have to? State how affordable those units have to be, like, you know, they they included some numbers saying, you know, eighty-four percent of the highest need of those units is zero to thirty percent AMI. So if they want to ask us, like, how how would those units at that affordability rate be feasibly constructed? I mean, that's where we can say we're working with, you know, various nonprofits, the Housing Authority to. But those units are allowed to get built. We don't stop them from getting built for our zoning regulations.
So let's just say BLT is going to come back at some point with their, you know, raccoon park and stuff up at Merit Seven. And that was approximately five hundred units, wasn't it, all in?
No, twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred, yeah.
Okay, so. A little bit less than half of those. If if this just went through, you know, when you had to do it all at once, that's what that would look like. Half of those units would be.
Right, right.
Yeah, so with with that, and and again, Brian was kind of hinting at the different levels of affordability that will be required. That one will have approximately a hundred and twenty deep restricted units in it. At a, some of, you know, they're not going to be at thirty percent um AMI or SMI, but they'll be, or sixty percent, but they'll be at that eighty. So I mean, I think we have to be able to, I think the key thing is demonstrate the ability to. Um and I think working with the Housing Authority on what they're planning, plus what is in the development pipeline or what the zoning already allows, I think, I think we'll be okay, but it's, again, it's still a little bit up in the air. And my guess is that, based on, you know, the conversations we had last week with the, and I forgot her name, she kind of heads the planning. She kind of heads the Planning and Development Section of, of the, the House was kind of hinting at there, there probably will. They're, they're anticipating making changes to this, even if it's signed and, and made into law.
Okay, because um I lost my train of thought. Sorry. Thank you, Steve. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask you. So this is just starting when this law passes going forward. Does it take into consideration the fact that Norwalk has thirteen percent? Or whatever we have, I think it's thirteen percent affordable housing already? If we only had ten, would the number be greater?
Um, it's hard to say. You'd have to look at like their, their methodology. I mean, if you looked at like neighboring communities to us, they have to, per the fair share report that they did, they actually have a higher number than us. So I think the fact that we're at thirteen percent helped in terms of lowering our overall number that they assigned to us through the fair share units. Um, so um, yeah, I think overall the thirteen percent or whatever we're at for A thirty G was, was helpful to us.
Okay, thank you.
Was your question, are we eligible for moratorium if we wanted?
Me? Are you talking to me, Darius?
Uh, yes.
Um, well, no, I wasn't really thinking that. I'm just curious, cause I feel like Norwalk bends over backwards to do everything the state wants. And, you know, a lot of other municipalities don't. So if nobody else is going to you know, why, why do we make that extra effort? I mean, obviously we need the housing, but.
So yes, we could, yes. And we, and we do carry a great deal of the burden. You know, we've discussed this as a commission before. Lou's brought it up, I brought it up, where, you know, we have our neighboring municipalities where they're at three and four percent of affordable housing and we're at close to fifteen percent. So yeah, I believe we could be exempted for, uh, if we really wanted to. But of course, we do need the housing. And our neighboring towns aren't moving quickly enough.
Yeah, well, and they're towns and we're a city, so there's a difference.
Yeah, I mean, and this is kind of off topic, so I apologize, but you know, like, I, I hear the comments too, and, and from my perspective. You know, what Harper says or doesn't say, if it's not a law, you know, I, I think we try to do what we think is appropriate for the city, and that's why we've identified the areas where we want the city to grow. Based on where we have our infrastructure, based on where our employment centers are, based on where there's activities and things to do to try to make it, you know, uh, that kind of environment where it's walkable, things to do. Not relying on automobiles. So that's why the, you know, the, the density where it's allowed i- is, is located. So it's not spread out up in Cranberry or in West Norwalk or somewhere else. It's kind of like, right? We understand that these are the areas, if we're gonna grow, these are the areas where we should grow.
Right.
Does anybody have anything else? Or should we move on to the acceptance of the minutes? And thank you, Brian. This is really helpful.
Yeah, no problem. We'll see if he signs it. I think he has until Tuesday, so we'll see.
Yeah, maybe we can, Brian, just put this item back on the agenda for the next meeting, just to kind of recap and see where we're at and see if the we want to follow up on anything.
Yeah, last I read on, as it pertains to the reporting on it, was that he was uh pretty ambivalent and stated that he would only sign it if there were, if there were promised changes to it. So we'll see. And parking definitely seems to be an issue.
Well, if I understand it, just really from talking to somebody, I haven't looked it up myself. If he doesn't sign it, it goes into law. It's the opposite of, in the federal, the federal, if they don't sign it, it's a pocket veto. It means it's vetoed. If it's just failed to be signed by the president. But with the governor, if he doesn't sign it, it automatically goes into law.
Yeah, but I think, I think part of it's also kind of um messaging.
Oh, yeah, exac- yes, exactly. He, he can stop, he can stop, I didn't sign it, you know.
Yeah. But we're ready, I think I'm ready to get to the minutes. I don't know about anyone else.
Okay, let's move on to the minutes, unless somebody has burning, something or another going on.
I think Darius is ready to get to a German. I don't think he wants it.
Yes, right on, very true. Exactly.
Yeah, you know, it's a bit humid out here. My allergies are acting up.
Do we have a motion uh to accept the minutes?
I'll move to uh accept with one modification that I've seen from voting on one of the last minutes, the April sixteenth minutes. So I'll, I'll move with that one amendment to uh um, to the current minutes.
Okay, uh, does that, somebody second?
One second.
Okay, good. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right. We've all voted yes. Uh, any further comments of the director, Steve?
Just a couple of things that you might find um interesting. The city's in the process of getting new uh permit software for building permits and all kinds of applications. So the idea would be to go to a completely online platform. So we've been working with a fantastic consultant on helping us, that helped us put an RFP together. Um, probably one of the best consulting firms I've ever worked with, just super professional, on point, on time, all the, all the time. Um, and we're actually meeting Tuesday to shortlist the thirteen firms that responded. And then set up interviews um in August, so with the idea being by September, the city would have a contract with that new vendor and then start working on, you know, probably for twenty twenty-six, at some point, late twenty-six, maybe early twenty-seven, having that new permit software in place. So that, that's kind of an exciting thing going on. Um. Two other software-related things, um, we talked about, and you might remember from the capital budget, uh, field card scanning and building permit scanning. They have completed the nineteen twenties, fifties and eighties field card scanning. And they're gonna pi- they're gonna pick up the seventies in a couple of weeks. Um, so we think by the end of the summer, by the time they kind of check everything, get it all organized, all that data should be online, no later than early fall. So you'll be able to search old field cards online and not have to come in and request them to be dug out of some catacomb somewhere. So that should be all online. And they just picked up I think Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday this week, they picked up the nineteen twenties building permits through the nineteen sixty-seven building permit. So all of those are getting scanned. Um, we're gonna keep scanning until we run out of capital funds this year, and then we'll pick it up again when we have more in the coming years. But the idea is over the next couple of years to be completely caught up with all the building permit and zoning permit stuff all scanned. Link that with the tax assessor data, linking that with our GIS. So it's kind of all, I don't know how that all works, but the idea would be a lot more information will be online and available to the public, which will expedite a lot of things for a lot of people. And, you know, including staff. So, but I think it's way overdue, but it should be a, a great asset to the community once we're kind of fully up and running. Brendan and I are working on a couple other little side things. We have a new uh software, Esri software is the one we use for all our GIS mapping, which we've probably shown you some different maps. But there's an extension called Arc Urban, which basically takes our zoning code. And they've three D modeled every existing building we have in the city. And this program allows us to make new buildings and say, all right, if we want to change the zone and add four more stories, this is what it would look like. And you can actually measure the, it measures the heights on the um other buildings. So it calculates a line of sight, so you can see visual impacts to everybody. So that's something Brian and I are gonna be continually playing with, and we have a couple ideas on things we'd like to show you. So that'll probably be later in uh twenty twenty-five.
That's really cool.
Yeah, it's fun. It's actual planning.
And then on those other permits and things, if we can just find the link in the department when we go to the city website, that will be even more amazing.
Yeah, we, we're gonna definitely put them on the tax assessor. We'll probably put them on the building department. So there'll be one link, so it'll say tax assessor field cards, and you'll be able to dig that out.
Yeah, okay, good. The city search bar still could use a lot of help.
Yeah, the website needs a complete overhaul, would be my guess, but yeah, yeah, um, we've looked at the cards they've sent us to date and they, it's the fu- the search function works really well and the, the cards are really clear. So it's, it's pretty encouraging.
Great.
All right, well, maybe we could send a top-tier consultant over to the, the head of the administration and we can get things working on the real website for the cities.
Any other comments of commissioners?
No, Wegmans is almost ready to go. I don't know if any peo- any guys drive by that way.
Yes, Wegmans, Target, you know, they're all racing to the finish line.
Yeah, Costco too, everybody's moving.
Oh my gosh, I know. The solar parking lot is quite interesting.
Yes. Yeah, Weg- Wegmans actually ended up, I don't know if we told you this already, they added from the condition of approval we put on to put the solar over the parking, they actually added more. Um, so we were really encouraged by that. They, they found there's a real cost savings to it and that the customers really like it. Um, they brought me out there to just do a walk through the outside. Um, and all the employees, everyone, they were only parked under the, the solar canopy, so.
That's so funny when we did that, how much resistance there has. Even every application when before was a requirement about the solar. And once they all installed, they're like, wow, it's great. We're glad we did.
Do you know, uh, do you have any applica- uh, former applicants, I guess, in mind that would be interested in coming back to like give some comments? Maybe do another like roundtable around that for us to look at regulations and such?
For, for the solar itself?
Uh, yeah, like their, their positive experience, like I guess after the fact, right? Uh, yeah.
For a year and see how it works out.
Sure, yeah.
With any hurricanes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be good to get like, or even like if they had like a report, like uh, energy usage on site A versus site B. Site A doesn't have any solar, site B's got solar on the roof deck and, you know, what these savings have been. That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I agree. Uh, with some time, they're, they're focusing on opening right now. Uh, Darius just messaged me saying that his laptop battery died, uh, so he, he's not able to move to adjourn.
Uh, before we adjourn, Steve, I just wanted to mention before you came uh uh on board. Um, I asked Brian perhaps to have the staff have a conversation with Jessica uh regarding whether she might be willing to give us a heads up on where things stand with uh Manresa.
Oh, you wanted her to come to a meeting and chat?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna actually probably see her Friday, so I will ask her. She, I know she's offered, yeah, I'm, I'm sure she would. And I'll just, we'll try to find a mutual, not-too-busy night and when she's available.
Good, thank you.
I think they're having another public forum on July thirteenth, which is curious, and it's a Sunday. I'm wondering if that was a typo, but it's out there in their information.
Yeah, I know the um, the tanks, I don't sure, I'll actually go in on site Friday, but I know the tanks are down or partially down at this point, so that's progress.
Yeah, that's cool.
Hey, does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion on Darius's behalf. Uh, I see JJ just joined us. Uh, welcome JJ.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, see you all soon.